Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Fifteen hundred and fifty-ninth regular meeting of the Board of Alderman of the city of St. Anne, Missouri, held at City Hall on Wednesday, July fifth at seven P. M. Alderman Moreno, can you lead the board with the pledge of allegiance? Can I remain standing, please? I want to take a moment of silence, please, for those who have suffered and may still be suffering from the storm damage, the young nine-year-old who lost her family over the holidays, as well as our department staff who will be working through the witnessed thing of such a horrific event. And I thank you to the staff for coming to the College of Residents once again. Please be seated. May I roll call this?
Everybody but Alderman's left here to see you.
I wanted to take a moment to inform the audience of the agendas and public speaker cards at the back right of the room. The resident would like to address the board during the public comments section of the agenda. Please pull out a speaker card and have it ready. And remind you that this evening is the meeting of the Board of Alderman. Public comments will be entertained during a specific time set aside on the agenda. In Communications, I need the approval of minutes for November first, twenty twenty-two, November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, and June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, meeting meeting, and January third, twenty twenty-three, and June fifth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes. Can I get a first?
No move.
Second?
Sacramento.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we will begin public hearings. We'll now hold a public hearing for a special use permit for thirty-six oh nine eighty road. Are there any proponents? Please come up and tell us about your business.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. How are you today?
Great. How is everyone doing? What a mess, like this storm that we just had.
We worked our way through, huh?
We did, we did. Just thank you to the city, too, for removing all of the tree limbs. We appreciate the work. We really do. Naxella Thomas, Anthony Thomas, we own the car wash, the wash bucket on eighty road. We're asking for a special use permit for our food truck, which would be called the food bucket. And it will sit in, I want to say, on the left-hand side of the parking lot. If you're entering from, what is that, eighty road, St. Charles Rock Road? It'll sit on the left-hand side. It permanently sit there. We'll sell food on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays to our customers and anyone else that would like to eat during the hours that we operate from eleven A. M. to five thirty P. M.
I've seen two different ones at different times down there, maybe both at the same time? Are you having more than one? Or you worked on the other one, or was it being cleaned maybe?
It probably was being cleaned.
There's a yellow one and a black one.
So the yellow, the black one is a young man that comes and gets his car washed from us. So he was just showing us his food truck and trying to make sure that we know and helping us out to understand what we need on there for the healthy and safety and plumbing. So the yellow one is actually ours. We're getting it together. We got the fire safety suppression done. We got the electric done. Now we're looking for someone. I'm gonna put that out there for the plumbing, if you know anybody, that does that. And then we'll get it wrapped, and it'll be the same colors, purple and black. And it'll have the food bucket, and we'll get the logo on it, so.
How many employees do you have down there?
So actually, my husband's going to cook, and probably one more other person, or maybe two people.
My twin.
Yeah, I don't know, it's my sister, because she likes to cook, too. I don't cook, just so you guys know. I eat them.
You have a lot of people walking around. Is that only two?
Oh, you mean at the car wash?
Yes, sir.
Oh, no, car wash. We have, what, ten people now?
I was gonna say, there's a bunch.
So we have ten employees now. We have been rotating them in and out because, as you guys know, in this economy, people don't want to work. So we have been blessed to, the ten people that we have now seems to be very solid employees and co.
They're working on work permits.
Yes.
We have three teenagers, young teenagers.
Yeah, so we do hire teenagers as long as they have work permits for the summer and through school after hours, so they can have something productive to do. We also support them on saving money to get a vehicle at sixteen. They have to keep their grades up, just out there, just in case you guys want to know. So, yeah.
We got the bench and the tables set up on the west side of the building back there?
We have the fence.
We don't have a, we're looking for somebody to build us a bench, you know?
Yeah, and once that gets done, then we'll see you guys again, because we have to get that permit. So, we're just looking.
What's your hours gonna be?
Eleven A. M. to five thirty P. M., Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
You made that earlier than you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, board? Guess that's all they have for you. Are there any opponents to the food truck on the corner? Seeing none, I need a motion for a first and a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any aids? Okay, hearing none. The special use permit for thirty-six oh nine eighty road food truck and restaurant is approved. Thank you for continuing support in St. Anne. And round two. We'll now hold a public hearing for the special use permit for ten four fifty St. Charles Rock Road. Proponents, come on up. Tell us about your business and...
Oh, not Rock Road.
No.
That sounded a lot like me.
I know.
I apologize. I'm on the International Plaza, man.
Oh, all right.
Nervous and spurred nervous.
Okay, sorry. It's International Plaza?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, I was getting thrown off. Awesome. Thank you so much to see you all again, and thank you for serving our community. My name's David. I'm the pastor of Expansion Church. We currently meet on old St. Charles Road. And we've been a church in St. Anne for over twenty years. Our name previously was New Voice Church. It was pastored by Mike and Debbie Masters, and so I know some may know that. I bring that up just to say that our church has been a part of the community, a part of St. Anne, and serving St. Anne for over twenty years. And so we're looking for a special use permit at one oh four five zero International Plaza Drive, just across from the community center. And really, our desire is that to remain, to relocate our church and to remain in St. Anne. We love being a part of the community. We've been for many years serving the community in different ways, community nights and hot meals and things like that. And that's our desire, to continue to be a spiritual community, blessing the community as well as a service organization. We just love it. Our church members, our board, really feels like this location is the best location for us and the right size. So about two years ago, I became the pastor of Expansion Church, and I was tasked with selling the property, as well as kind of relaunching, so to speak, after COVID. And we've been doing that. Our church has been growing and revitalizing, and people have been coming to our church and such. And we sold the property. We got, became free from being landlords and out of debt and such. And now we're looking to own this property on the International Plaza Drive, to own it. We feel it's the right size for us. We have equity. We have the ability to renovate it, make it look nice on the outside. And so that's really why we're coming and asking for that special use permit.
Are you moving? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, so we're relocating. So the property on old St. Charles Road, we used to own it, and we are currently meeting there. We want to leave that space and move to this one on International Plaza Drive. The, we sold that property, and so now the current owners, really, once we move, they'll have the ability to renovate it and, I think, hopefully bring in more revenue and such and jobs to the city, yeah. So that property, of course, very large, the old AMC complex. And this property, we feel much more of a good size for us.
And you realize this is next to a golf course, right?
Yeah, yes.
The new one that you're moving in or purchasing? I haven't seen the inside of it, but how much are you gonna have to renew that they've done because of what they're gonna be using it for?
Correct, yeah. So we've heard the golf course jokes, and also it was being renovated to be a marijuana production, and so we've had a lot of jokes there, too. But yes, actually, inside, we just took a look at it again. I've been in many times. And we have some drawings that we've done. There's gonna be a good amount of demo, and I believe there's some open permits. We briefly talked about that we need to close those permits out. But yeah, so the idea is just to kind of open that space up. We'll have an auditorium and some rooms. Then, yeah, but we've looked at it. We know what needs to get done, and we've even done some of the estimates for the cost. And we feel like, based on our research, we can do it, yeah.
Good luck.
Yes, it'll be, it'll be work, yes. Yeah, we have a good contractor we're working with right now.
Awesome. Any other questions from the board?
Just to clarify, you are purchasing it?
Yes, that is correct.
You're not renting, because right now you guys are renting space.
Correct.
And you're gonna be, so...
We're gonna purchase this building and renovate it ourselves, yep.
Have you started the bidding on to it or private, or committing into the building?
Yeah, thank you for asking that. So we are in a sale agreement currently.
Okay.
And the current owner of the International Plaza Drive, they really supported us in this, you know, pursuit of a special use permit. This is a part of our due diligence phase with that owner. So, you know, if we receive an approval from you as a special use permit, we'll actually be able to move fairly quickly, finish up, well, I guess, estimates and such, and then probably finish purchasing sometime in August. So we'd start renovations by September, yeah. So we're already, yeah, trying to do all of our due diligence.
Do you have any projections on when you'll be able to get in after that?
Yeah, the contractor that I've been working with currently said if we start in September, they giving a realistic, would say, like, in January. They actually said maybe by Christmas, but I added a month. So I think realistically, January, and of course, that's working with the permitting process and all those things, so, yeah.
You'd have a buffer there just in case?
Yeah, absolutely. And we have the cushion there where we're at, so we feel good about all that process, yeah.
All right, is, any other questions from the board? All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any opponents? Okay, hearing none. I need a motion from the board for a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the special use permit for ten four fifty International Plaza Church facility is approved. All right, number three. We will now hold a public hearing for a special use permit of ten four six four St. Charles Rock Road. Come on up. Please tell us a little bit about your business.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Pleasure being here tonight. My name is Ray Whitmore. The property in question is, we're gonna turn it into a Margaux's Pizza, which everyone loves. We actually purchased the shopping center, the building itself. And so the good news is not only we're gonna do something with the pizza place that was there, we're just gonna move our stuff in and do our thing. We're also gonna do some uplifting to the shopping center itself and do some work there as well. So we're real excited about being here, you know, just for the community. So we're ready to get going, yeah. So, yeah.
Board?
So that's a great call out. So I knew you were gonna ask that question, so...
Because I was told it was gonna be moved.
Yeah, so I want to introduce you to our new guy that's taking over the market, because the other guy just can't get it done. So Speedway Moving, he will be out Wednesday to move it. I got his confirmation here. I talked to him today. They did plan on coming to get it, and they didn't have a big enough truck to get it because of weight. It weighs close to about eleven thousand pounds with everything on it, so they had to go get a bigger flathead. So, but Wednesday morning is what we agreed, so, yeah.
It's gonna be a sit-down?
No, it'll just be carryout, delivery, no tables. There's no need for that, not in that facility, yeah.
We need a sit-down, please, before we move.
Well, let's get this one done and give me some time. Trust me, we have, we have stores that have dining rooms in them. I mean, we have stores in Texas with massive dining rooms. We have stores in Wisconsin that have four chairs in them, so St. Peters has a few tables. So we don't have an issue putting tables in our facilities, just, you know, for that, for that.
So there's room for expansion with your business at another location, man?
Oh, we're definitely. There's no doubt about it. St. Louis is a hot market for us. I mean, I lived here. I ran businesses here. My leader of the market grew up here in Florissant. We want to open a lot of markets here. So this is one, and we're gonna, we're gonna go as fast as he lets me go. So when he says wait, I've got ten more people ready to be hired, I'll say, all right, let's start throwing hammers, man. Let's get this thing done, so, yeah.
I wasn't waiting till all three of you businesses came up here to thank all of you for choosing St. Anne and settling into business here. We need you. We want you.
Oh, yeah.
If we do anything, we can to help you.
So this is a great community. I mean, like I said, I used to live nearby, and we, my son attended a Taekwondo school here in town. We got to know a lot of great people in this community. And like I said, there's no reason why we shouldn't be here. There just isn't. I mean, they're, I mean...
As the free minister might say, amen.
Yeah, that's what I say, amen, yeah. And everyone's been really nice. I mean, everyone is really cordial with us, and we want to give this community something we will have, you know? And you're gonna enjoy the pizza. I'm just telling you, it's the best. There's just no other way to put it. It's hands-down the best, so.
Your delivery service, is it gonna be like DoorDash and all that, or is it your own delivery?
Yeah, so, yeah, so we offer DoorDash, we offer Uber, but we also have in-house delivery drivers. And we'll, and depends on how far we do the map. We typically start with three-mile radius, and then if we see we can, we can get a little bit farther, we'll do that. So we don't, you know, but we gotta worry about making sure we deliver our promise of thirty minutes or less getting to the door. So we get, let's get that right. And then when Lonnie says, hey, Ray, we're at twenty-three minutes, I'm like, all right, let's flip on another map and let's go, so, yes, yeah.
Any other questions, board? All right, sounds great. Appreciate you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, are there any opponents? Hearing none, need a motion for a first and a second?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. This special use permit for ten four sixty-four St. Charles Rock Road for Margaux's Pizza is approved. Okay, we'll now hold a public hearing for special use permit for ten four two five and four two seven. Is that gonna be International or St. Charles Rock Road? St. Charles Rock Road. An entertainment place. All right, come on up and tell us about your business.
Good evening. I'm Katrina Chapman. I am, my brand, my brand is Because You Deserve It. And just to give a brief summary, I grew up in politics. I've always been into outreach, lead outreach, work with community officials, city officials. I'm in the favor of Governor Mel Corneyhand. Bottom line, I've learned and adapted to, excuse me. Okay. I'm sorry. So I have gotten accustomed and adapted to just serving the community. Bottom line, I do have a relative who is supporting my vision. My vision is to be an outlet and a space for repasses, non-alcoholic events. It's just basically been an outlet, you know? I've been connected with so many families. I'm a mentor. And in the meantime, I do understand that while you're trying to grasp the whole transition thing, I'm plugging in as, hey, let me take something off of you, you know, not costly. It's just basically been an available outlet so that they could just, you know, move through their transition smoothly. So that's the whole purpose of providing the event space for the repasses. And yes, it will be available for others who may have a, you know, celebratory, you know, celebration event or whatever they may want to do there. It is open to the public, but I'm basically providing myself as a community space. Fast forward. I am connecting with Alexander White Mullin, Ronald Jones, that's my cousin. I call him Short H, but Austin Lane. Ma'am?
We're on video here. He's gonna hear.
Oh, okay, yeah, Austin Lane. He's a childhood. I'm sorry. No, Austin Lane is a childhood friend of my mom's. He and Eliza Moore. So we've all connected, you know, so that we can just work together, plug in as a puzzle piece and complete this whole process of what we call life. So that's just basically it.
Board, questions?
I think I answered everything I wanted to know last time we talked, too.
You did, yes.
And good luck to you.
Thank you.
As I'm in St. Charles, I can, where people are, it's comforting to have someone where they could go to, to help them feel better?
Oh, yeah. I just went through it. I just relocated back from Atlanta for like a little bit, over nine months. And I just care for my mom's baby sister, stage for cancer, and it was ahead of everybody. See, event space, see, event space. So imagine me saying, if only. So that right there is what pushed it dry, for me to just say, let me just do it. But, and then, of course, you know, you have colleagues. Everyone's passing every single second. But bottom line, yes, sir. Just prepare to assist and provide.
Sounds like a wonderful business to have, man.
Thank you.
Is this gonna be more than one room at a time, or just one big room and only one, like, family can have a gathering there at a time, or...
So right here behind us, in this mini short mall, one zero four two five is one area, and then there's a wall that separates it from one zero four two seven.
Right.
So it will be two events at one time, yes.
So we have two different families that could meet at the same building, but in different rooms?
Separate rooms, right. Yes, sir. Everything's separate. Each side has their own restroom and their own privacy. Under my surveillance.
Cool. All right, board, no more questions then?
No.
Next, that's all we have for you here up here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are there any opponents? Seeing none, can I get a motion for a first and a second, please?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Special use permit for ten four two five and four two seven St. Charles Rock Road and Entertainment Place is approved. Thank you again for choosing St. Anne. All right, we need to prove some liquor licenses for Blaze Liquor and Final Destination Liquor licenses. Chief, are they all good?
Very good. Excellent. No problems.
Okay, board, can I get a first and a second?
Third.
Do we need to do them separate, or can we get them all?
Can we do them together?
No, you need to do them separate.
Separate, okay. So let's do Blaze Liquor first. First and a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, approved. Final Destination Liquor licenses?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All approved. All right, at this time, we will take public comment on agenda items only. Are there any public comments on agenda items? Seeing none? We will move on. Introduction of bills and resolutions. First reading of Bill number thirty-four eleven, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to purchase and equip three police vehicles from Landmark Dodge and two from Lucius Ford. Second reading of Bill number thirty-four eleven, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to purchase and equip three police vehicles from Landmark Dodge and two from Lucius Ford. Matt, can you give the audience some information?
Yeah, this is a order for police vehicles for next year. It takes forever to get vehicles with the pending UAW auto worker strike. We may not even get them this year, or at least some of them this year, so... We need to get our order in if we want to get them later next year.
Now, is it, on the Ford dealership there, did they not have a problem in not using anymore the Fords or the Murphys as far as police cars, as far as the gas tank?
Uh...
Few years back?
Well, those were with the, uh... The issue was, the agencies, I believe, were taking out the spare tires. And so that was the issue with, you're talking about the rear end?
Yes.
The rear end?
The gas tank factor. Are these not maybe sedan? Maybe these are vans or bus?
Yeah, the Ford doesn't make a sedan anymore. Dodge is discontinuing the charters and shoes, so there won't, there won't be any more police sedans after this year.
But SUVs, okay?
Okay, anybody else have any questions?
Um, can I say something? This is the first time I've ever been here, so I apologize if I'm out of order. But can we ask questions? Do we ask questions, or...? I'm curious about a couple of things.
You want to go back to the comments?
Let's go back to the public comment.
Um, is that when I should have?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Come on up, sir. Don't be sorry. Come on up.
This is for agenda items.
Yeah, agenda items, is that what you're talking about?
I'm preparing this issue right here with the police cars.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then you just state who you are and give your address.
Okay, I'm Scott Houseman. I'm at one oh six seven four St. Anne's, in the quarter. Is that what you want? Um, I had just a couple of questions concerning the cars. One is, what is the cost of buying and equipping police cars?
The cars, about anywhere from forty-seven to just over fifty thousand dollars.
Per car?
Per car, depending on the state. Because this all started during COVID. The vehicle manufacturers got backed up with the chips, and they put all their time and effort into producing cars and actually make them money and stripped down government police cars, who were pretty low on the list. So basically, when they got back to manufacturing police cars, you know, the prices, you know, the state, when the state binned them out, for the state-like contract, that locks the dealers into a year fixed price. And the market for cars was such that the state was unable to obtain any hard bids on police vehicles. So what they did was they negotiated with preferred dealers, or dealers that the state had done business with before throughout the state, and authorized municipalities and other governmental agencies to purchase from those vendors. So two vendors listed on here are vendors that in the past have had the state bid on police vehicles. We've bought police vehicles from all of these vendors before.
But why the two vendors? Why not one? You would, you would think if you purchased more cars, you would probably get it at a lower...
The, the, the market for vehicles is so skinny for the dealers. If you buy one or if you buy ten, it's the same price. And the additional thing is, we have equipment that goes into these cars, and the equipment, and some of the equipment is not compatible, you know, a light bar that goes in a Ford is not compatible to go into a Dodge. It doesn't fit. So we tend to buy vehicles that will keep the purchase of additional new equipment down because the cost of equipping a vehicle, you know, probably if you bought everything new for one of our police... new for one of our police cars, it would be close to forty thousand dollars.
So you are buying Dodges, so you're buying Dodgers?
We're buying, we're buying.
To put in equipment that doesn't fit?
No, buying, no, we're buying, we're buying cars based on what equipment we have available to put in the cars, because cars don't always last the same period of time as far as miles go and damage and stuff like that, so as cars come up for replacement, one year it may be a Dodge that needs to be replaced, the next year it may be a Ford, so what we try to do is we try to fit the vehicle that's coming up with the equipment that we have, so we don't have to purchase additional equipment.
Okay.
That's a good question, too, thank you, the Dodge usually, those are for the road cars, the trucks usually are for the command staff, and so for the, so we carry ammunition for training, full shooting training, all of that stuff is usually what all the, the trucks report, so, which is really convenient, so.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, it's a great question, too, thank you.
All right, we appreciate you, board, there's no more questions, go. Okay, so we need a first and a second motion?
Second.
Okay, Matt, call, please.
Jason, yeah?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Dirk?
Yes.
Murphy's excuse, Jimenez?
Aye.
Crone?
Yes.
Shy?
Yes.
Okay, bill number thirty-four eleven becomes ordinance number thirty-three eighteen. First reading of bill number thirty-four twelve, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with the city of Woods and Terrace for prisoner processing and housing services. Second reading of bill number thirty-four twelve, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with the city of Woods and Terrace for prisoner processing and housing services. Chief?
Ford, yeah, Ford Mayor, and public, I want to make sure, we take in consideration anytime that cities are asking us about prisoner transport services or housing, we obviously house for federal prisoners, and so we're trying to make sure that, yeah, we're making money off of that, but that, it's liability, too, so when it comes to other agencies that we're trying to work with, such as Woods and Terrace, the biggest thing for them is that they are next door to us, they can drop those prisoners off and get back on the streets, and that they're serving the public, and that's what's really important, their police officers are professional, especially Woods and Terrace, they were the only department when we put this out for our active shooter training that showed up every single police, and that's what binds me, the police chief's brand new, been in the business for a long time, and I couldn't be more proud about their professionalism, so with your approval, we can, we can process their prisoners.
Any questions, Ward?
What reimbursement do we get for processing?
It depends on whether they're here, if they're looking releases a twenty-four hour bit of cost, because it's, it's near seventy, seventy dollars.
Yeah, we usually do it between fifty and seventy, seventy pounds.
And if they have to wait longer than obviously it's that, or the period, I don't know, dates, I think.
Any further questions? Okay, I'll ask for a first and a second motion, please.
Second.
Second.
Matt, roll call.
Jason, yeah?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Dirk?
Yes.
Murphy? Excuse Jimenez? Crone?
Yes.
Okay, bill number thirty-four twelve becomes ordinance number thirty-three nineteen. Approval of monthly reports and yard lists, any questions? Can I get a first and a second motion for approval, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed, okay, it is now time for public comment on non-agenda items, is there any public comment on non-agenda items from the audience?
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
My name is Heather Boyd, I live over on St. Monica's, I'm coming to you guys to talk about a possible like gun give back program. Yeah, sorry, a gun give back program, it kind of came about, my grandma has Alzheimer's, and my grandfather was an avid gun collector, he had well over three hundred guns, I mean, all over his house, and when she had Alzheimer's, one of the biggest things they had to do was get rid of all of his guns, and so for my family who has, I mean, they're law enforcement and first responders, that's what they've done, that's what my family has done for years, and it was easy for them to be able to know where to get rid of them at, and what to do, and how to do it the right way, and I realized that I'm lucky and blessed that my family knows how to get rid of them the right way, and that there's a lot of people that don't, and I went and actually went to the police department, and I spoke with the chief here, and I talked to him about it, and I talked to him, because the more I talked about it with people, the more I saw a need, the more I heard about the mom who found the gun in her son's room and doesn't want him to get in any more trouble, so she doesn't know what to do with it, so she's going to throw it away. I'm talking to, you know, different people, I have a friend that I went to high school with, that she went to everybody about her husband's PTSD, and nobody would help him, and nobody would keep his firearms, so when she came home with her toddlers, she tried to go in the bathroom and found his body instead. So I'm asking right now to, for us to promote with the police department and with their support, a gun give back where somebody can go and they can, it can be out in the public that they can contact the police and they can get rid of the guns that they don't want, and I'm not trying to take guns from people, I mean, I believe that it's a right, but I also believe that there's certain times where you don't need to have them, I mean, my grandma right now, for, is a perfect example, she thinks that the caretaker is trying to steal my grandpa from her, so all she keeps talking about is wanting to shoot the caretaker, so it's huge, huge that they don't have any guns anymore, because fifteen minutes after she did it, she wouldn't have even known what she did, and so I'm also asking, just because of me talking to people, and like I said, the more people I talk, the more stories I'm hearing, that if there's any, any place in the budget of St. Anne to do a possible gun buyback, I mean, I think it would be a huge, huge.
Just on clearance, because when we started off, you were talking about just disposing of the gun, now you're asking that we buy the guns?
I want to do both, so I really, really want to promote the give back, but I also want that if we have a way to actually do a buyback also, that that could be something that we do like every six months, because there's also going to be people that just need to get rid of them.
Hi, I am, so Heather Kane, board mayor, public, Heather Kane to our neighborhood watch program, which has been very successful the last eleven years, she showed up, asked great questions, Kane, and so I love the idea, we have never done that before, so what we're going to be able to do is start for the give back program, that's no problem at all, getting the website, we're up to date, we'll put a link on there, this is the procedure, we need to make sure that people know, hey, if you find a firearm, this is what you can do, we'll even come to you, if you want just a plain blowsaw, a detective to come, so there's no scene with a police car, so we need to really make sure on us to hit the mark home that, you know, with violence and everybody's talking about firearms and shootings and so on, so it was a great idea, I like that, and in the future, if that works out, and I don't know if it's a thousand or two, whatever, if we ever have something, I know we have a tight budget, Matt and the board mayor, let's see how this goes, and I don't know about every six months, but even something as a start, I thought it was a great idea, that's just a ask, I don't think anybody's going to get upset, but let's see how that give back program works first, and then later on, you know, if we do have something and things are going a little bit better financially, then we can do that also, and I'm not even proposing the first couple of years, you know, even after our fundraisers that we do for our neighborhood association, maybe even taking some of that money and then doing the buyback program as well, so.
I was going to say, maybe we could do separate fundraisers.
I think a lot of places that do that, do, they get donations.
Perfect. From businesses. From our communities, yeah. That would be really good.
I'm not really sure, I mean, the city attorney, I'm not really sure the city can use public dollars for that, so, I mean, we can, we can, we obviously, we can take the gun and dispose of it, but I would really, certainly for the city to.
See, if we can just look into that, on that, on that portion, I want to make sure, mayor, board, you guys know in the public, so as an elected police chief, right, I pretty much have the authority that I could take these firearms, resell them, and, you know, to FFL, business owners who have their federal firearms license and so on, we're choosing not to do that, we have a firearm, and they are ready and the case is disposed, we take those firearms to what's called gun busters, and what they do is, gun busters and FBI uses them, very credible, and what they do is, they might, they'll take out the slide after it's been checked through NiBRS, NiBRS is a system where we make sure that that gun has not been used in any fatted crime, or, you know, violence, or cases already closed, but what they do is, they might take the handles, so on, pieces that they can use to assemble another firearm, that's how they state their business, but they do shred all of that, and then what's, what's really nice is that afterwards, they actually make these paperweights that say gun busters, and it's all of those pieces actually inside to use in the gun, too, so I just want to make sure that you know that you're a police department here for St. Anne Mayor and Board, that we are doing the right thing, that we believe that, not just putting firearms back on the street, so, Heather, thank you very much for taking the time, that's a very nice and way to do it the right way, so thank you. And I know the chief is really connected in the fundraising business, I think if
he wants, he can help you set up a way to fundraise for the second half of the program we're looking for.
Thank you, and I do want to really emphasize, like, I'm not, I'm not against guns, I'm not against that, I just, because of what my family has gone through and others now, I just feel like there is a need that we have another choice for people that no longer need their firearms.
I understand that, I had a friend who had her husb, much of her husband's guns locked over, she didn't.